Good evening, everybody.[30.11][30.11](laughing) He doesn't miss much, no, he's doing, he's doing pretty good. Welcome to the May 20th session of the Kingston Board of Select Board. We have our department heads with us this evening, and I'll start introductions. To my right is Chuck Hart, a board member, Peter Bakie, board member, Susan Eyre, Administrative Assistant to the Select Board, Chief Joel Johnson, Police Chief Joel Johnson, Pedro Avia, Building Inspector, Code Enforcement, Phil Coombs, Highway Department, Public Works Director, sorry, I got it all in there, though (laugh), Paul Butler, Recreation Director, Tammy Bakie, Town Clerk, Tax Collector, Paula Mahoney, Finance Director, and Fire Chief, Graham Pellerin, Board Members, Laurie Schwett, and to my immediate left is Glenn Kopplman, Vice Chair, and I'm your Chair, Eli Alessio. So, since I went, started from my right, I'm gonna start with Chief Johnson with the reports from the department heads.
(inaudible) Whoops. Very important to have this. Last week, I talked about our arrest on motor vehicle stops, how they're on the rise compared to other towns. I made a list together to give to all the Select Board, like you take a look at it and compare it to the other towns. If you don't mind, I'll take a peek. Again, I predict a very busy, busy summer, especially at the rate we're going. Motor vehicle stops are, I mean, we were at 100 cents the last meeting, which was what? Was that last week? When, when we had the last meeting?
(inaudible)
What did we have last week?
We had regular board meeting last, we had, we had the waitstaff.
I said that out to you guys, but, um, take a look, and it speaks for itself. You don't have to do it now, just be aware that things are on the move, and, wanna be busy. Uh, the only other thing I have is I made Paula aware that we had a little fender bender with our favorite fire department and our favorite Kingston Police Department. Um, I don't wanna say it out loud because that would make him look like he's at fault. So, I'm just gonna keep it quiet, let you guys figure it out.
Okay.[170.45][170.45](laughing)
So, no, no big deal, minor damage, but, uh, that's it.
So, you're trying to say a police car hit a fire truck, or?
No, the other way around.
Vice versa?
Yeah, yeah.
(inaudible)
Oh, yeah, it's, it's easy not to get hurt when you're not in the car, you're actually in the person's house that you're at the call for, so.
The car was empty?
Yes, yes, the way we like it.
Gets worse, huh, Chief?[195.51][195.51](laughing)
So.
Okay.
That's it, I have nothing else.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief Johnson?
I do, Eli.
Sure.
Chief, have you noticed any increase in motorcycle wheelie activity?
Mostly on depot road.
Yeah.
Well.
We're working on it.
I had, I had a bunch on Route 111 in front of my house today as heading up Great Hill.
Okay, it doesn't surprise me, um, I know Eppen had a dozen of them not too long ago, just pulling wheelies, passing cars, right up 125, right through the intersections. That's today's society.
I know, I hadn't seen it before, right there, and it, I was out in the yard, and all of a sudden, I heard the, they, 'cause they came to a stop, they revved up, and then they popped it and, and went up the hill, and I was saying, whoa!
Yeah, that's common, they don't do it in front of us, that's by bad fire.
I was just curious if it was indicative of more of that type of activity?
That's been going on for a long time, especially when they're riding in groups, they get cocky, and they like to show off in front of their friends.
Okay, I'll sit.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Pedro Avia, Building Inspector.
Good afternoon, members of the Board, Department Heads. So, um, I'll go, try to go as quick as possible because I have a lot to cover. So, I provided to each one of you the new revised schedule fees. Uh, I had a question this morning with regards to the schedule fees, as one applicant understood us to be double-tapping when it's in regards to building permit and then trades, but, per law, and, uh, under enforced code, an adopted code by the, the town, uh, the town reads on section 108, "A permit shall not be valid until, until fees prescribed by law have been paid, nor shall an amendment to a permit be released until the additional fee, if any, has been paid. A schedule of permit fees on building, structures, electrical, gas, mechanical, and plumbing system or alterations requiring a permit, a fee for each permit shall be paid as required." So, it is for each trade and development taking place. Building permits valuation, it states that building permit valuation shall include the total value of the work for which a permit is being issued, such as electrical, gas, mechanical, plumbing, equipment, and other permanent system, including materials and labor. Labor. So, we're not double-tapping, these are part of the law, these are the minimum requirements that we as a town should abide by, that's why the schedule fee was revised.
So, many of our local contractors are having sticker shock, is what you're trying to tell us?
Yes, yes. So, uh, and again, I'm willing to show the letter of law to any applicant resident or anybody that wants to come in contact with us and understand better the fee schedule. We were not up to par with the state requirements, and in addition to that, also, as I said, one of the things that I took into great detail is, as part of me being the supervisor for the Department of Building and Development, is to make sure, how are we collecting fees? How are those fees relating to the labor work that we have in place? And I was seeing that our labor work was too high compared to what we were charging, creating a negative balance to the town, so I wanted to at least bring that to par, to a, to a level that is workable. Uh, so that's what we did.
Hey, I have a question. What, what, um, did you cite in ordinance, was it 108? Is that ours?
Uh, no, that's the building code, that's the state building code, which is adopted by H.P., House Bill 1865, I believe it is, and is assigned into law by the governor, and this cycle of the code is gonna be signed into law as June 1st.
And that, that's what you were just reading about the fees?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions for Pedro? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, do the contractors get a copy?
Uh, they should be able to get one once it's approved by the Board and it's made public record, it's gonna be public record.
Right. The hearing is set for June 3rd, Monday, June 3rd, here at the Board Meeting, so there will be a hearing to, for any other comments from the public, or questions from the general public.
And then, well, that, last but not least, we have been experiencing a very high volume of applications, phone, phone calls, and we're addressing complaints in a time basis, so we are moving forward with all the things at hand, and, um, assisting the other colleagues, inspectors and contractors in town to make sure that they have an understanding of where I'm coming from, that, uh, nothing is something that I wanna create out of the blue, that I show them the black and white of the letter of code so that they can see that it's written, that it's nothing, that is a creation, so.
Am I correct in that the project, proposed project at 266 Route 125 has not put in for permits at this point in time?
That, it is correct.
Is that correct? So therefore, they would not be grandfathered in, is that correct also?
That, that is correct.
Or is that a gray area?
We can, we can establish, uh, a policy where we can give the, the whole contractors a grace period, in order for them to become acquainted with the new procedures and policies in place.
Okay, 'cause I know they'll be asking me that tomorrow night at the Planning Board Meeting, so, um, I will refer them to you.
Most definitely, I'll be more than happy.
So, one, one question that I had, so, like, chicken coops, just, I know we passed an ordinance that, well, not the roosters, but sheds under 900 square feet don't need a building permit?
900, that's, that's a house, but, a shed, a shed, uh, per code cannot be over 100 square foot without a building permit. If our ordinance relates to a different number, higher than that, then the building code take precedence over that because we're no more restrictive than the state mandated code. So, we will need to abide by state code.
Okay, that's a fight for the Board.
Okay, maybe not for a few years, maybe.[593.54][593.54](laughing) Any other questions? Glenn?
Uh, one question. So, Pedro, this, this new sheet that you provided us with the fees, uh, this is the schedule that will be the subject of the public hearing on June 3rd?
Yes.
And so, Susan, this is, this will be available downstairs at the, in the office for anyone who might wanna come in and look at it ahead of time?
Right.
Members, members of the public in particular?
I'll put it on the website.
And the website, too, yes.
And the website.
Yeah. Even on Facebook, too, that wouldn't be a bad idea, post it on there as well.
Yeah, well, maybe on the, maybe on the town's Facebook page, there can be a link pointing, pointing to the website.
Sure, sure.
Where this can be found.
Yep, that'd be perfect.
Yeah, and I wanted to express that anybody that have questions, concerned, they wanted to actually come and sit with me, we can do anything to my disposal to make sure that I provide them with the tools and literature so that they can see what we're doing, what we're doing, and that is part of state laws.
Can I recommend that, what you quoted, that you have that kinda printed out?
Yes.
So people understand that we're not just making this up?
Most definitely, I actually did that this morning.[671.12][671.12](laughing) No, no, actually, I, I made that this morning for a contractor.
Yeah, I think it's important.
He wanted to, to actually see where I was departing from, to, for my request, and I said, no problem, this is, this is the literature.
And make that available with this stuff, so that people could.
It should be in the bottom, somewhere in the end of the, of the proposed schedule.
Most definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Pedro? Phil?
Uh, so, we submitted a flyer for inclusion into the tax bill. One side was stormwater MS4 requirements, just notifications that, under that permit, and then the other is for the collection center, just some details about that. Uh, if you notice on there, we're gonna be closed for Memorial Day, 4th of July, and Labor Day, just for staffing reasons more than anything, but, um, we did finally get a quote for the block work at the South Station, uh, the damage on the corner there, after seven masons came and looked at it, one of them finally quoted it, so, uh, as it's insurance work, we don't need to get multiple quotes, I was hoping we could, but, uh, I have worked with this contractor in the past, so, I think we should proceed ahead, as it's a fair number, in line with what we were given by the insurance company.
That was a different location, right, Chief?
Yeah.[761.54][761.54](laughing)
Sorry, I couldn't resist.[764.82][764.82](laughing)
I met with the Electrical Inspector out at the Plains, just to finalize some work for the, uh, the electrical work that we had spoken about under ARPA. Uh, we will not be doing that before the Fire Fest, just given the amount of time it's gonna take to grow back in, and timelines just didn't work out for everybody to make that happen, so, um, but, we've got that list pretty much finalized, we're gonna get that out to quote so we can get exact numbers on what that's gonna cost, and, uh, worked out some technical details onsite, so I appreciate his help with that. Um, if you look out the window, you can see the Grace Daley barn is moving right along, and, uh, the roof work has begun today, so he's doing a good job. I met with Heritage and Selectman Kopplman onsite, just so, before he did the floor, we could kinda take a look at everything and just be happy with where we're at, and, uh, I think, it's an old barn, so it probably wasn't level and true everywhere to begin with, but he's doing a great job with it, and, uh, is.
But it's, it's a lot better than it was.
Yes, indeed. Um, so, as far as, uh, the work the guys have been doing, a lot of drainage work, uh, just kinda fixing everything that got destroyed last year in the rains and, and through the winter, and, uh, also Memorial Day prep, just doing the cemeteries and getting things ready for summer, so. Uh, just a public service announcement, the sand pile is for ice and winter used by residents for one or two five-gallon buckets for traction, not 13 for your private business use, so, that would be considered that.
Oh, we had someone that was thirsty for some reason, for sand?
Uh, yes, and had been for a while, after reviewing the video footage, so, had a discussion with that individual, and it won't be taking place anymore. Pretty sure they knew it was wrong if they were waiting till after 2:30 to come and get that, but, hopefully it's been cleared up.
Those cameras did come in handy.
Indeed, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Questions for Phil?
Um, I just wanted to, um, talk just for a second about the email, the request that we sent about East Kingston, right? I just wanted to kinda talk that through for a second.
Yeah.
Um, and Phil can probably add information, but a lot, there's always a lot of mutual aid requests, and so, how do we wanna handle that in the future? Do we want Phil to just handle it, or do we want the request to come through the Board for assistance?
Much your pleasure, gentlemen.
And this one was in particular, East Kingston wanted assistance with our bucket truck to hang banners for graduation, right? That was just this one example, but I know there are multiple examples of kinda mutual aid with the towns.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we're one of the only towns in the area that has our own bucket truck, so, and someone qualified to operate it, so we have helped, uh, helped Newton with their antenna on their police station, helped East Kingston before with flagpole where they couldn't, you know, so we'll just pop over and, and it, it's just part of us helping each other, but I wanted to make sure that the Board was okay with that, which is why I consulted my liaison, so.
I, I think, anything like, any small thing like that you're comfortable with doing and have the time and the guys, just do it. I mean, I, I can't see us saying no to helping out another town, because when you need something, I'm sure you call them and they'll come over and help, so.
Yep, I mean, Newton provided the fencing for the playground, you know, to keep kids out while we were doing the work in there last summer, so, it's, uh, we all help each other out as we go.
I think we should be good neighbors, and I'd like to continue that.
Okay.
There's no reason, I mean, if it's, it's a bigger project, use your judgment, because that's the bottom line.
Right, yeah, you, I think if the Department Head can use their discretion, if it's gonna be a significant use of resources, both equipment and staff, and you think that it should come to the Board for review, then by all means, but, like you said, Eli, um, I, small things should be at the discretion, I would, I would hope, of the Department Head, and.
Yeah, 'cause we do mutual aid with the fire, with the police anyways, and larger projects, but it's a little bit different.
It's a little different in that, in that, in those cases, I think.
Right, but still.
I mean, we are part of a mutual aid, we're in the Public Works Association, and there's a mutual aid system set up in place there, and, and we do a lot of trading equipment back and forth amongst the towns, so, um, because it did involve manpower, I just wanted to make sure and clarify what the Board did and did not wanna know.
Yeah, it was not an inordinate amount of time, so I thought.
No, if it's more than two hours, I'll be shocked.
Yeah.
And we, we do the same thing for mutual aid without emergencies, you know, if they need something from us, then, again, as long as it doesn't.
Reasonable.
Complete our resources, but, that's, that's kinda what mutual aid is all about.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Everybody okay? Yep. Anything else? Yes?
Before we go on, um, this is the flyer that's being proposed to go into the tax bills?
Right, we'll have it as an action item.
I was just gonna say, do you wanna take it up as an item? Do you wanna do it as a vote now, or do you wanna wait till later?
Whatever your pleasure, we can do it now and move it off the agenda.
Uh, so, okay, 'cause I, we got a quote for it, and it's, it's really cheap, but, it's $6.58 from Minuteman Press. Tammy, they can get it done by noon tomorrow for the tax bill, okay? Um, and the cost will be split between, I think, the, your stormwater line, is that right?
Yeah, so we're gonna do 50/50 between stormwater, and then we did add solid waste and recycling to the executive line item, so with the Board's permission, we would take the remainder of the money from that.
Since it's half of one and one half of the other, so it would be 320, 29, 329.
All right, well.
For each.
Well, if you'd rather wait and, and take it up when you were expecting to, I, I did.
It's okay.
It doesn't matter to me.
So, Chief, is the morning?
I think it's the difference of like $50, but it also ties someone up for most of the morning. When we got the quote previously, last year, it was substantially more expensive, so, um, I think based on what we pay for color copies and a ream of paper, this is negligible, the difference.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion, then? Do you have, they have, do you have a dollar amount?
Um, it, Minuteman quoted $658, but that's way below the threshold of needing a PO, but, part of it comes out of the solid waste and recycling budget, which is from the Select Board. We own that, that line, so it would be 300 and something from that. I can't do math quickly.
If it's 6.58, it's 3.29 is half.
Okay, then 329 dollars from the Select Board budget.
Seventeen years in a lifetime in a grocery business.
Yep.[1222.41][1222.41](laughing)
Well, we didn't have computers back in those days.
All right, so I'll make a motion to authorize the.
Public Works Department.
Public, the, the flyer produced by the Public Works Department, uh, to be inserted into the next tax bill.
Okay.
And that the cost for printing it will be 600 and.
58.
58 dollars.
Shared by.
Shared equally by.
Stormwater?
The stormwater line out of DPW, and 50% of it from.
The solid waste and recycling budget line from the Select Board.
Solid waste and recycling line from the Select Board.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, it's approved, go forward. Okay, anything else for Public Works? Okay, we'll move right along to Mr. Butler. Did you have anything else, Phil? Oh, no.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. All right, Paul Butler, Recreation.
Hello.
Hi.
Good evening, um, just a few quick things, camp is still ready to go, it's about a month away, uh, looking forward to that, and thank the DPW Department for all the stuff they've done, we've moved lockers for staff into the staff room, which I think will give them more privacy and free up some room outside as well, but they put some chips on the playground and put, fixed the back of the water bubbler and lots, lots of stuff that were done there. We had served with Liberty Come twice in the last two weeks to do various tasks, they were phenomenal, small groups, but they worked really hard. Um, wanted to mention one of my rec committee members, probably spent about 16 hours painting the rec center, the rec center, if you haven't seen it recently, is still a mess in the middle, but, from the outside, has been repainted, and, um, there's still some more to go, but we got the, the majority of it done. And then, last but not least, Susan with the ukulele and black, well, the Black Bear presentation from the, um, New Hampshire Fishing Game on June 1st, and then the, is it a jambary? No, what do you?
Mighty Hoots.
Mighty, mighty hoots, so.
Mighty Hoots.
Right, that's, right, so, twice they'll be helping us out, so the, um, those are a couple events to look forward to. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Paul, any questions? Thank you. Mrs. Bakie, our town, our favorite town clerk and tax collector.
Thank you. Um, as of today, we have over 300 dogs that are unlicensed, we've started making phone calls, we are using the animal control officer to assist us with this procedure. Um, next month, we'll send a list to the Select Board, and Susan will create the warrant to add the civil forfeiture to, so that's another $25 in addition, plus the cost of the certified letter, it's all RSA-driven, so the Board will sign that warrant, um, next month. Um, tax, tax bills will be mailed tomorrow, we'll get the inserts from the DPW, and we'll throw them through our machine, we're gonna use the kitchen because it's too noisy to use while we're open. The new state election software is active, the last day to change your party affiliation is June 4th, and, um, the town clerk's office will be closed Friday after the 4th of July holiday. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Phil, Tom, and John for putting together the furniture in my office and for installing the new window, they did a fantastic job, and the window is used constantly. Um, and I want to wish everyone a safe and happy Memorial Day.
Great, thank you. Questions for Ms. Tammy? Thank you. Paula Mahoney, our Finance Director, NHR.
Um, just really getting ready for the audit that's coming up in a few weeks, and trying to gather everything, and, that's really.
Did they delay it longer than you thought?
No.
Still not, okay. Any questions for Paula?
Is there anything that you need from anybody to assist? Okay.
Thank you. Fire Chief, Graham Pellerin.
Good evening, uh, a few things, uh, we've narrowed it down to, we're pretty sure one ambulance, uh, we've gotten four bids from competitive bidders for new ambulants, so probably by the next Select Board meeting, I will have, uh, kind of a little presentation about the other bids and the one that we're going with and why. Um, I met with the Trails Committee last week, with Greg Senko and Rick and a couple other guys, um, to go over, uh, better access for department vehicles, and, uh, sort of starting to make headway with that. Uh, thank you to Phil for doing the research and finding the guy to fix the South Station. Uh, right now, South Station has no power, so we should probably get that up and running sooner than later, so, uh, if we can get, if he gets the, uh, payment or the repair information to you guys, I don't know if you have to vote on it, where it's insurance or whatever, but, um.
I believe I just have to, I have to send this to the insurance.
Okay. Um, I apologize for, uh, an accident that happened over the weekend.
Well, in the old days, we used to have those kinds of accidents from the police department all the time, but we don't have, we don't anymore.
We're catching up slowly.[1614.82][1614.82](laughing) So now, I embody work and breakfast, so, um, and then last thing is the Summer Fest is really coming together, uh, thank you for all the support from the community, um, as you've started to see some posts coming out, uh, we're meeting weekly, um, to go over the events, uh, so you'll have bands throughout the, the weekend, uh, the carnival will be throughout the weekend, Touch Truck and Cow Patty will be on Saturday, see the DPW for deeds, um.
Or Tax Collector's Office.
Or, yep, Tax Collector's Office, sorry. Petting Zoo and Reptile Show will be on Sunday afternoon, and we have a Viking reenactment throughout the whole weekend, so.
A Viking?
Yeah.
That should be cool.
So, uh, you know, something different, but, um, hopefully, we'll see everybody there.
Great, thank you. Any questions for our Fire Chief? Nope. Like to thank you all for coming in the evening, normally we meet during the day, but, scheduling a little messed up a little bit, we're gonna have a hearing tonight, so thank you for, for accommodating us and coming this evening. You're welcome to stay as we continue on with the agenda, or leave if you'd like, that's up to you. Phil, are you gonna do a presentation on the roads?
I am.
Okay, you wanna, you wanna do that now, before the hearing, or do you wanna wait till after the hearing?
I'm ready to go.
Then, then I say, well, let's proceed right to it so that you can get home, too.
Is that a key locking, or is that a second? Is it, is it gonna be, you need the spring?
Bye, bye. If I call you tomorrow, I'm gonna be so tired.
Okay, I won't be surprised. See you later. Thanks, just gonna put this up here.
That's pretty good. That's nice.
It's like hiding ninety miles. You're a vegetable. You can go there. Okay, looks good. All right, Bill Meister.
Turn that on, see if you can hear me. So this is just a presentation on some of the, well, the end of it is the roads that we're proposing for this year, but just presenting some of the issues and current situation that we have with our roads, funding, and some of the potential solutions. So our roads, our problems, some of the asphalt processing, existing and proposed treatments, some proposed solutions, and what we're planning on working for 2024. So as many of you know, we have one hundred and twenty-two lane miles of road according to the New Hampshire DOT. Recent finding by myself is that we've probably got about ten lane miles of road that is not counted into this calculation, which means we are missing out on block grant money. One of the main examples of this is Green Road. It's approximately three miles long. It's classified as a private road, but the town owns most of the property on the road and we do maintain it. So trying to identify these roads so that we can at least get the credit for it and get some of the state block grant money. In the past, we've had a worst-first approach. As a road was falling apart to such an extent, we would perform a shim and overlay on it as the primary method of paving. The, and this is a good way to do it if it's cheap, but from 2020 where asphalt was sixty-one dollars a ton, last year we paid eighty-five dollars a ton. This is an over forty percent increase and our budget has not kept up with that. Right now, the average lifespan of a road is between ten and fifteen years. Our main roads are getting between ten to twelve years. Side roads, cul-de-sacs, things like that are between fifteen and twenty, depending on conditions. And some of the alternative pavement preservation techniques that we've been implementing can extend this by many years. So just for background, there is a lot that goes into paving before we even pave. As you can see here, we're doing some tree trimming. We have to have fourteen feet in the air cleared on both sides of the road so that we can have an asphalt truck all the way up in the air to unload its contents. As I said, the past month, month and a half, has been consumed by ditching and drainage. And this has really become a glaring issue with the amount of rain that we've had over the past year and a half. People filling in ditches, people wanting lawn right to the edge of the road and basically encroaching upon the town's right-of-way is causing a lot of problems. Sitting water is the worst thing for a road because it'll work its way underneath and freeze or just undermine the sub base. So we're spending a lot of work getting the water to go in the right place. When we move into an area for paving, that's typically when we do an assessment on the culverts. We're doing that throughout the year normally, but any culvert work we're going to do is done at this time. Obviously, you don't want to cut a new road, so we cut it before we pave it. And then, any engineering and permitting. Also, this includes the striping after we pave, shoulder gravel after we pave, and then depending on the situation, some driveway leveling to make sure that residents are not dumping their stormwater into our roads. So just got done with the use of our asphalt hot box that we acquired in a trade with a neighboring community. Last year, I was pitching to get a new one, but we were able to work a trade for a piece of equipment that we hadn't used in over ten years. Really didn't have much auction value and they had a hot box that they were looking to get rid of. So that piece of equipment was forty-three thousand dollars new and we did that trade at no cost to the taxpayers. So that has worked out really well. What that does is it keeps the asphalt at temperature so we can go throughout the town and just patch holes. But that's a lot better than cold patch. It stays in the hole and it keeps us from having to keep doing it over and over and over again. And the other side is when we do whatever preservation technique or even a shim and overlay, we don't have to spend a lot of money at that time fixing a hole. We've already, you know, it's in there, it's done. So that's been a good time saver. As I stated, shim and overlay was kind of our go-to technique and it's a great technique. Expensive, but it restores the road profile, fixes wheel rutting, and allows you to maintain the pitch of the road. Any minor depressions, any ravelling, and it does temporarily fix cracks, but they will eventually find their way through. All right, so our problems. We have lower quality asphalt. As all things related to gas and oil have gotten more expensive, the refining process has gotten that much more good at extruding the things that are worthwhile out of it, such as gasoline, crude oil, all the things like that. So tar or asphalt is the last thing at the bottom of the bucket. And so there's less of the good things in the asphalt, so it tends to degrade a lot quicker. So when people say they don't make it like they used to, they actually, it's actually true in this case. The other problem we have is currently we've budgeted two hundred and ten thousand dollars for paving. That's the number for hot mix. And then we get approximately a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in state block grants each year. That goes up and down. And then there are one-time grants. So this year, we received sixty-eight thousand dollars in one-time grants and those, at the benevolence of the legislator, whether we get that or not. We also have the road rehabilitation line, which is eighty-two thousand dollars, but a lot of that is going to be consumed by drainage work this year. So we try to put as much as that we can towards paving, but if there's a lot of side work to do, like I talked about in the previous slide, then that consumes a lot of that money. So at that current funding, it will take us thirty-two years to pave every road in town. Say that again. At the current budgeted amount that we have, at current pricing, it will take us thirty-two years to pave every road in town. And that's if we were just paving. Some of the examples are Great Pond Park where old or other camp roads that were just kind of put in there, meant for seasonal use, and year-round usage on not very well-set-up roads has taken their toll. There are also roads that we have that were dirt roads or gravel roads that, when we had some millings from a reclamation project, those were put down. That was about six, seven years ago. And the timeline has kind of run out on those. We're spending a lot of time patching those roads. They were a great temporary fix, but now those people who were used to living on a gravel road had a paved road. And now they're going to expect, I don't expect they're going to want to go back to a gravel road. So those are some of the larger issues that are looming ahead. And our timeline on our roads is forever. At no point are we going to be moving out of town. Our, our horizon on this is always. So, and the way we are funded right now, it's going to take that long. So this is just a slide showing all the things that come out of the refining process before you get to asphalt, which is the residual at the bottom. So as you may or may not notice, all of those things have gotten a lot more expensive and refineries have gotten a lot better at extracting them out. But those are the things that made asphalt flexible and gave it more give. It doesn't have those properties in it as, as much anymore because they're extracting those out. So that's a problem. The other problem is they're using a lot more recycled material, which is great on paper, but you already have a product that has had the oils cooked out of it and you're recycling it, you're adding some oils back to it, but not what you would have gotten with virgin mix. Rich St. Hilaire had always specced virgin mix for the roads in town, but there are no local asphalt plants that provide that any longer. Everybody is using recycled materials. Benevento was the last one and when they did their upgrade to their plant, they stopped doing virgin mix. So we are fully recycled material at this point. So I have this a little easier to read for everybody. So the best way I explain this is pretend this is a siding on your house. At the top is where it's brand-new and beautiful. And then you get to where you would get to two to three years into it. You paint the ones that are starting to crack and chip a little bit. Then you paint all of them. Then you start replacing clapboards. Then you start replacing all of them. Then you rip your house down and rebuild it. So it's a steady curve that shows what happens when you don't maintain the siding on your home. Apply that same concept to the roads in town. The first one on there is a fog seal. It's not very effective because we have so many trees, it doesn't allow the product to cure as quick as it needs to to be effective. And it really doesn't provide that much. It provides basically two years of, it's a sealant that goes on there, so that's not really applicable in town here. Crack seal we have used. Last year, we were able to seal almost all the roads that were done in 2018. So those were starting to crack. They had done shim and overlay roads. And this year, we're hoping to do a lot more crack sealing. After that, you see chip seals or micro-surfacing. We did do chip seal last year, we'll talk about that in a minute. And then there is a cave seal, which is a chip seal with a micro-surface on that. So a micro-surface is similar to a sand seal that they used to do. It's kind of, kind of like your, when you get your driveway done by someone, you know, they come and squeeze you on, the heavy material. So what that does is that you take a chip seal and then you micro-surface over it, so that removes a lot of the complaints about chip seal as far as loose stone. It's just an additional layer on top of it. And that'll provide you seven to ten years. And then further down, you have the hot mix asphalt shim and overlay and then full-depth reclamation. So that's kind of the steps you would take as you're maintaining and then doing minor rehabilitation and then full-on rehabilitation. So I am an advocate for getting more value out of our dollar and by maintaining what we have. So utilizing pavement preservation techniques and alternative road coatings before failure. Catching these things, like I said, we, we've started at the ones that were done in 2018 and we're focusing on maintaining those moving forward. So this year would be the 2019, 2020 roads that would be given a crack seal. That buys you two to three years. And then you can look at doing a micro-surfacing or a chip seal or cave seal to keep the road in shape. So regardless of that, we're still going to be in a position where we do not have enough money to sustain the maintenance of our road and the continued pavement of our roads. So some of the options that we have for that are a road bond. Newton just put that on their warrant last year and that would be very similar to how we funded the fire station. It would be a bond from a state bonding company and we could get the roads that most needed it done the first year and kind of slowly meter it out because if you do everything in one year, well, then ten years later, you're going to have the same exact problem again. The other one is increase the budget. I know I've been sitting here for two years here in successive Select Boards tell us that we have to cut costs and cut our budget. So I don't know how much of an appetite there is for that. The other is do nothing. The consequences of that are, especially given the amount of rain that we've had, the roads will degrade quickly. The less you do, the quicker they'll degrade. And that not only affects the residents' vehicles, but that definitely affects our plow vehicles. That increases our maintenance on those and it causes major damage to our plow vehicles when you have major cracks in the road and things like that. That's just going to beat up our equipment and you're going to pay one way or the other. I guess my non-standard idea is that we capture the plowing and salt money that is left over at the end of the year. Foes a Warren article to take that money that's already been put in the budget. The voters have already approved that money to go away. It's great that we can give that back to them in taxes, but if we could come up with some way to divert that towards the already existing Transportation Improvement Fund, that would give us a way to start attacking some of these larger issues like getting engineering done for Great Pond Park. So as we're working in those areas, we're working off of a plan that kind of works to the longer-term goal.
How much money did you turn back this year from?
I believe it was a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars total. I don't have the exact breakdown on how much we gave back, but I, I want to say between salt and snow plowing lines, it was in the seventy to seventy-five thousand dollar range.
If we were to do a bond, what kind of money are you talking about? And I'm not saying do all the, all the roads at once. I think that would be foolhardy, but we did a third of them.
It would probably be in the three-point-five to four-point-five million dollar range.
The cost of the fire station.
Correct. So it wouldn't be cheap and I, I don't exactly advocate for that. I think the problem we have right now is we don't have enough in the salt budget. If we actually had a real winter, we would be in deep trouble because salt is about thirty-five dollars a ton more expensive than it was the last hard winter we had. So what the Transportation Improvement Fund could be rewritten to include is a kind of safety valve if it were, if we had a bad winter, we could use that money to cover us for salt as well and snow plowing.
What if we have a bad summer? And by that, I mean a really hot one, which is what they're being predicted this year. Is that going to have any adverse impact on roads?
Not particularly. It would probably be good to get some of the cracks kind of pulled back together without getting too far into the weeds. A lot of times when you see cracking, that's the road, that's the ground freezing and it's pulling the asphalt back because
It's like the front stairs.
Exactly. And so when you see those cracks and then when it warms back up, they go back together. So I hate the heat, but I'm okay with a warm summer from a technical perspective.
Thank you.
Yep.
So that, that price you said for the bond, that's to do all, all the roads, even though we wouldn't do them all in the same year? That's to do all of it and then we would space it out?
So that would be to get basically the roads prior, that were done prior to 2018 that we have not implemented into the roads program?
Yeah.
To get them shimmed and overlaid to do the work we needed to do. And again, I do, I don't, that is a very, very budgetary number. The other side of that is if we had, so in my capital improvement submittal, there was approximately a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar number for engineering for Great Pond Park to get just basically an engineering plan to include, at some point, there's going to have to be a community water source down there. I don't think there's any way around that. It's only a matter of time before the DEF says, no, not anymore. The other side of that is there are tons of wet areas that just need to be dug up and rebuilt and the roads, the drainage down there is awful and so anything we do down there is just a waste of money because we're not thinking of the long term. And I mean, I can have all kinds of ideas for the long term, but that needs to be an engineered plan that we work off of down there.
Definitely would need a bond issue there to get water in, for example.
As we're ripping up a road, if we're putting the pipe in at least so it's there for future use, it's just, materials only have gotten more expensive, so if we do it now, at least it's, it's cheaper.
More questions at this time?
So at the end of this, I have a list of things we're doing and the roads we're doing it on. I'm definitely willing to listen to people that we don't do it in the residential areas. I did have the town engineer out this morning to look at both of the chip sealed roads. He felt that they were exactly where they needed to be, that they, there was no issues with the road. Again, it's, I understand the aesthetics of it and people have their issues with it. So I'll skip over this one quick. There is no conventional chip seal proposed in this time. I am proposing a lot of crack sealing. So I'd like to get at least the roads from 2019 and 2020. And if we have any of the remaining money we have, I'd like to get any of the roads done. Any chip sealing or crack sealing we do, that provides our biggest bang for the buck. Because it's cheap money, and it at least just kind of hits pause on the deterioration of the road. It gives us more time to kind of figure out what we're doing for a long-term plan. So I am a strong advocate of crack sealing.
And that's what it looks like?
Yep. Not pretty, but effective. Kind of like me. So this is the kind of alternative part of it here. I am proposing that we utilize, this is a, this is called asphalt rubber, crap, I just forgot the acronym. But it's similar to a chip seal, but it has a modified polymer in it that incorporates recycled tires. And this sets up a lot quicker. You'll see how they do it, and I can show you a video on it. They move very quickly with this because it sets up very quickly. They pre-treat all the chips so that they adhere to the rubber. However, the downside of that, and again, this is meant for high-traffic surfaces. This is meant for roads that are high-volume. But this is only half the cost of a shim and overlay versus a quarter of the cost of a chip seal. As a majority of the complaints were about the aesthetics of the road, when they treat the stones, they actually come out black. So it does look like a freshly paved road. The reason I'm proposing this, beyond the cost savings that it offers, every year, and Chief Johnson can back me up on this, there's at least two or three accidents on Ball Road or Rock Rimmon Road where some lovely person takes out a telephone pole and takes out electricity to the whole neighborhood. Of all the things people said about chip seal, nobody said that it did not provide more traction. So on these hilly, curvy roads, this will provide more traction. It provides a great savings. So what this shows on the bottom there is what we would pay. So it's approximately $194,000 to do the entire length of Ball and Rock Rimmon Road. If we did that as a shim and overlay, it would be $352,000. So that's the cost savings that that offers. That road right now is a perfect candidate for that treatment. It has cracking. We would do a crack seal on it first, and then we would go over it with this crumb rubber treatment. And that would provide basically seven to nine more years before that road would have to be attended again. Again, the name of the game here is just delaying the rebuilding process. So...
The other piece of the chip seal was, aesthetics was definitely one. But the gravelly aspect of that, especially as it filtered onto the lawns on the side, would that be similar to this, but this be similar to that, I should say?
You mean that area of the town right of way? Yes. But the, it would not be as much. Because again, the formulation and the reason it's more expensive is because it sets up very quickly. So they still do a sweeping that day to clean up any, so they sweep that day. The other one, they had to wait a week, and then they came back three weeks later. They do it that day to clean up any loose chips, and then they come back two to three weeks later and do a final sweeping. And that should take care of most of the loose chips. If we don't want to do this in residential neighborhoods, and I understand the complaints, they're concerned about children and things like that. But if you're going down Ball and Rock Rimmon Road, you already don't care about your life because the road's too narrow and, you know. But...
Wait a minute, I've been doing that for 50 plus years.
Well, if you're walking or biking on there, it's a very, very narrow road. And what that provides is more traction to the vehicles on there. At the end of the day, the road is meant for biatic use, which is bicycles, cars, but mainly cars, to get across there. And before anyone asks, I would advocate for this on Little River Road, my road. Because that seems to be the common question for people because it's very curvy. I will say, I did get a call from a couple people on Jericho and one person from Williams Path who did thank me for it because they said, "You did what the police have not been able to do in 20 years. You got people to slow down on this road." So I understand there are downsides to this. But at least at my house, when we're watching our budget, the fund meter tends to go down a little bit. If we want to not increase the money we're spending, we have to make difficult decisions. Because again, it would take us 32 years to pave every road in town, and we're getting 10 to 12 years, best-case scenario, on our main roads. So I'm open to any and all alternatives. I, I'm not sold, or, you know, I'm not looking to die on any hill for this, but...
Phil, on that slide, what were the other roads? What's your plan on all of those other ones? Did you say that? OK. I didn't know if I missed it.
So one of the primary concerns is Winslow Park and Beach Drive. What happened there, and I believe it was a mix issue when that was done previously. Last year, it was a little hole like this. And then this winter, we didn't have a very bad winter, but it just started coming up in ribbons. And if we do not do that this year, it will be completely gone.
And Beach Road?
Yes, and Winslow Park.
And the Laker entrance?
Yep. There was one minor area right there by that entrance. And this is what happened on Church Street a few years ago, where the guys go out there and, you know, go to like blow off the loose pieces, and the whole road would just start blowing away. It's a formulation area, and I don't know why it's doing that, but...
So what kind of road treatment are you giving for that, then?
So all of these that are proposed are, let me back up. I'm still waiting on numbers on this. So these are just basically in the calculator. At $85 a ton is what I've been given by the asphalt companies or by the paving companies. So this is shim and overlay. All of these roads are at a point where they need shim and overlay.
OK.
The savings that I can offer is on Ball and Rock Rimmon. Some of these, to make the transition from the older roads, is we're looking at doing micro-surfacing, so doing a crack seal, and just having a shim coat on there and micro-surfacing into it. So we'll basically be doing sections of the road that aren't that bad. They'll be getting a micro-surface on the top, and it'll be a uniform coat throughout. Again, the micro-surface is a black, it's just a top coat that you would see on a regular road.
It does look pretty.
Yes, it does look pretty. I've now realized that that is important for people, so I'm addressing that. And basically, these are the worst-case scenario numbers. So the reason that this number is higher than what we have budgeted is we do have money left over from the block grant last year. Basically, we get to a certain point of the block grant, I have to make decisions on what we can spend that year. So anything that comes in after that point. So we did have a couple house bills that came in after that point. So we had more money in there. But after we spend this, basically, next year, we'll be able to do New Boston Road. And that's it. Newton has gotten there the money that they needed, so we'll be working with them. So it's paved complete the whole way through to keep that going. So this is the year we're trying to get all of the roads that need to be done off of Ball and Rock Rimmon, so the Blue Route area, as it's called. We should be able to get everything attended to this year if we do the crumb rubber asphalt treatment.
Can you notify the neighbors accordingly?
I've got sandwich board signs. I'm going to set up on all the intersections. We've got our Facebook page. Trying to find a singing telegram to go door-to-door and let them know what's coming. Just to test my theory if that would keep people from saying they didn't know. But, so the only thing that's happening outside of those areas is the South Road we did last year. We only did one section of it because Brentwood didn't have enough money to finish their section of it. So we'll be finishing the top of the hill on South Road, and then topping that all the way through with Brentwood. And then Giles Road, we had to do a lot of drainage work on the catch basin there. So we'll be finishing that section going into East Kingston. So that's the only thing that's outside of the Ball and Rock Rimmon area.
You did a nice job on the drainage in the corner of Ridgewood and Rock Rimmon, by the way. That whole corner was a mess.
Yeah, those guys did a great job on that.
You did a nice job on that.
And we met with the town engineer this morning. So Winslow Park was hit pretty hard with the rains that we had. There was a lot of washout. So I'm working with the neighbors and trying to address that problem. We are going to be reclaiming that road and reshaping it. So that should take a lot of the drainage issues away from that area and prevent that from happening in the future.
Does that sound like I know what I'm talking about?
Oh, yeah. Watch this. Stress-adoring memory. Sam.
Thank you.
Very good.
Very good. I'm impressed.
Phil, do you think it might be worth a warrant article? Not specific for roads, but, you know, more additional money for roadwork? Is that, I mean, I know is no, but it wouldn't exclude the roads you already have planned. It would be to be able to do more roads without going the bonding way, etc.
Yeah, that's absolutely a possibility. I mean, we did do that with Church Street when Rich had to get that milled all the way down or reclaimed and reshape. So that was a warrant article. I believe that was in 2017 or 2018 that that was done. So, no, it was, I'm sorry, 2016 that was done. But I, again, my point is I'm open to any and all ideas because it's just, the math isn't mapping. We're not going to have enough money to do what we need to do to keep the roads in shape. And the downsides are numerous if we don't keep up with it, so.
So these roads are the ones that need repair this year?
Yep.
The numbers you've got are for shim and overlay?
Correct, except for the bottom two.
Except for the bottom two. And where does this fall in comparison to the budget that you've got to work with?
This is the budget I have to work with.
It is?
Yeah. So...
So you have enough in your budget to do this?
Yes. And we could be done, so we've already done two of the areas. The green route and the gray route, which is the Hunt Road and the Little River areas. We did crack sealing on the brown route, which is the North Road area. So basically, we've got three or four years before anything needs to be done in there. And this would basically knock off one of those routes. So we have seven routes in town. So this would be four. Within two years, we've had four of the routes caught up. And, I mean, there are a few outliers here and there of areas that need a lot more than just this. And they're just kind of on the back burner for the moment because they're not, I mean, they're not going to get any more destroyed. But this would allow us to kind of close the books on this area.
So, and on the Ball and Rock Rimmon, right?
Yep.
For the alternate method? And it would be different from the previous chip seal in that it has that additional coating on it?
So it's the same technique, but it's the initial asphalt spraying that they do, the emulsion that they put down first, dries very quickly. So that's the difference, is the composition of that, and then the treatment of the chips themselves. So they do a cleaning of the chips in a conventional chip seal, whereas these are given a treatment that makes them adhere to the emulsion that much better. And that's part of the enhanced cost.
So theoretically, there would be fewer loose?
Yes.
Chips?
Yes.
Other questions go to the panel? Thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you.
I guess, so we're OK with this plan? Or do we have to vote? Like, what are we doing? I don't...
I'm good. I'm good with this.
OK. All right.
So, but if the boy wants to vote, and I have no objection to do that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we're all leaving with the same, yeah, right. As long as he makes sure, he, I'm sorry, that was rude. As long as the department makes sure that the public is aware that's on these roads when paving is going to occur, whether it's the enhanced chip seal or the shim and overlay, whatever, they know what's happening, right?
Well, they need to know so they know how to get in and out of there.
Sure, but we can do, you know, website, Facebook. We just need to make sure that...
So my intention is to have basically two road meetings. One in the Ridgewood Association area and one in the Acorn, Mockingbird, Bob White area. And we'll put, like I said, my sandwich board signs out to notify people. That will put it on Facebook.
OK.
And we'll, you know, anywhere anyone can scream it from, we'll send it out there. I know the Ridgewood Association has a page of their own. So we'll reach out through there and, you know, get the word out. The nice thing with that area is there's numerous ways in and out. So it's not going too much of a grain on people, but...
OK. Great.
Thank you.
Do you have any more questions?
Well, to go back to the question that was sort of thrown on the table, I mean, do we want to put a formal endorsement of this on the record? I mean, I think we should.
I certainly am not objecting to do that. I think, whatever is your pleasure. Make a motion, and we'll go forward.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to endorse the road work, the road resurfacing plan presented by the Director of Public Works tonight with the understanding that it is within our budget for that for the year, and that it's all going to be shim and overlay with the exception of Rock Rimmon and Ball Road, which will be done with the enhanced chip seal product.
And is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 No. Eyes have it, he got a full endorsement. OK, thank you, Phil. OK, I believe it's time to have our earring on the easements.
Do you want to move heavy?
We have to do the hearings.
Oh, because of schedule?
Yeah. Well, he could still go. I don't think we need him.
We've got to roll those contracts.
Yeah, but I don't think there's any, I don't think there was anything that was...
Let's just say, I'm always assuming that there's something that's going to be brought up. That's going to, you know, delay it for another period of time.
OK. OK, guys. Thank you. OK, so we're a little bit, running a little bit late for the public hearing, for the purpose of the public hearings, for the purpose of considering two applications for discretionary preservation easements for historic barns in the town of Kingston pursuant to RSA 79D. The first application is to renew a prior easement for a barn, Grist Mill, and a shed at 50 Little River Road, tax map R39 lot 10. The second application is for a barn at 123 Exeter Road, tax map R37 lot 24. OK, we have recommendations from the Heritage. Did you want to address this, Ernie? Please come forward. Thank you.
Yeah, Bob and I, Bobina and I, went out and did interviews and looked at both of the properties, Prescott property and Richard's property, and just, you know, went through the process of looking at the evaluation forms, making some determinations on it, and came up with those recommendations that you have there.
And both of them were approved from...
Yes, yeah. Both of them meet the basic guidelines for the program.
Right.
And then we looked at them from the standpoint of what would be the appropriate percentage based on the criteria in the evaluation.
Correct. And you have designated the Prescott property at 75% and the Richard's property at 50%.
Well, and the Prescott...
Actually, the Prescott one is 3... Oh, actually, the Prescott one is three separate buildings and they have...
Oh, yeah, it's three separate percentages, 75, yeah, sorry.
Yep.
I wasn't sure what the different colors.
Yeah, in the past, where there have been multiple buildings on a property, I think the determination was just, okay, that property gets X percentage. But really, based, since we have criteria that talk about different aspects that would raise or lower the percentage for a property or for a specific structure, we thought it best to go ahead and do each structure independently against that criteria.
So does that mean that in the case of the Little River Road property, that there would be three separate easements?
We talked about that. I don't know that, Susan and I had a little discussion on that. I don't know that there need to be three separate easements. I think if you had an easement that listed all three of them and indicated that the parties need to maintain those three individual properties, you know, based on the maintenance plans, I think you'd be okay. But I don't know, Susan or you?
I think they're just going to show up as separate lines on the property card with whatever...
Whatever valuation is for that particular structure.
Right, the overall approval would be for all three. And then the rates would be probably as you've given here. And that'd just show up differently on the property card.
So they can be separated on the tax, well, they're going to be, they're probably already separated on the tax card. They're identified separately and they have separate values.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess the, as I think about it...
So the easement document doesn't list the, doesn't list, doesn't list the...
I don't think it lists the percentage.
The tax value.
I think yours is back in there for signatures again, if you want to look at it. Did we already, no, we didn't, we needed Ellie to sign it, so if you wanted an example.
I don't think the easement document has the assessment reduction percentage.
It does.
It does?
Well, it says, yeah, it says, you know, the barn will be assessed at 75% or 25% or 50%. So it does have that in it.
I should have remembered, I typed it up, but I...
Okay, so with that being the case, if, for instance, if the Little River Road application, the easement would have to reflect three separate percentages in one document.
And three separate properties here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think the RSA talks about how, you know, what, how you would handle a multiple structure situation. So I guess that's something we need to think about, but...
I'm almost wondering if it would, it's more complicated in a way to put them on separate easements. But if for some reason the property owner decided to do something different with one of the buildings, it would be sort of in its own document to be dealt with as opposed to, I don't know.
I don't know, because they can't subdivide it in any way. So why wouldn't one easement be sufficient?
It was all on one last time.
But, oh, it was?
Prescott's, I think I've got that.
Yeah, this is a renewal. This was a renewal.
Okay.
So since there's three structures we're talking about, two of them are at 75% and one's at 50, how do we do that? If they're all in the same, I don't know, this is coming from a place of, I don't know. So how is that? How is that percentage reflected?
Each one has its own assessment.
In the easement document?
Yeah, yeah.
So...
Here, but here's the original, this is what we're gonna be signing right here.
What I'm looking for is mine, because Susan said mine is in here. We'd have to redo it.
We had to reprint it.
Yeah, I think, Laurie, in the easement document, you would say, you would talk about the structures themselves and you would say the grist mill will be assessed at X percentage
Okay.
of the, the barn will be assessed at X percentage and the shed garage will be...
And then on the property card, is that where we're talking, those are, they're listed?
Yes.
Different, well, because they're different buildings?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'm just trying to get a picture of how this works.
You only have one building though, right?
Just wondering if she lists the percentage?
Yeah, number five, method of assessment. The property subject to this easement shall be assessed at 25% of its full assessment value. That's because I was granted the 70, the full 75%. So, so under method of assessment for, say, the Little River Road property, in that item number five, you just need to identify each building
Yes.
and its appropriate assessment percentage.
Percentage, yeah.
Right.
Are we all clear on that? Okay, very good. Okay, is there any members of public that'd like to address, ask concerns or questions? Set that aside and we'll take action then when we come out of the hearing. And the second was from Mr. Andrew Richards at 123 Exeter Road. And on that one, was it 25%?
50% on that one.
50 on that one, okay. Any other comments on that particular property, Ernie?
It's probably going to need a lot of work, for one thing.
Yeah, he mentions that in his...
Yep, but he has, he has applied to the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance for a barn assessment grant, which I think shows his intent to really do the right thing with that property. They'll, at the end of the month, the Preservation Alliance will probably have a meeting to go over all of the applications that they have. So he should know in probably a month whether he gets selected or not. I suspect he would. But again, having applied for it and taken the time to do it, I think shows the initiative to say that he is really interested in trying to preserve the barn.
Okay, any questions from the public on that as well? Okay, there being no other business, I'll determine that the hearing is closed and we entertain motions individually on both those properties. First one is the Prescott property at 50 Little River Road.
I'd make a motion to approve. The recommended abatements, 75, 75, and 50, as presented by the...
Heritage, recommended by the Heritage Committee? Commission, yeah. Do I have a second?
I'll second it. And just for clarification, it's, it would be the grist mill building at 75% abatement, the barn at 75% abatement, and the shed at 50% abatement. As recommended by the Heritage Commission.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it, motion passes. The second property is listed at 123 Exeter Road for Andrew Richards. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Heritage Commission's recommendation of 50% abatement on the 123 Exeter Road barn, property barn.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it, motion carries. So both of them have been approved. Thank you very much, Ernie, to you and Bob for your work on this project. And Susan, yes?
Mike? Or how it could be improved. But basically, we just want to do a lessons learned to see what kind of improvement we can make on it and see how things go the next, next time we get some more applications.
I would say the process works well, but thanks to you, your efforts, because you're the experts in this area, certainly more so than the select board as a whole. And so your recommendations are critical to us making these approvals.
And having gone through the process personally, I can tell you that, you know, the work that Bob and Ernie have put into this is significant and that they've come up with a really fair and transparent and objective way to evaluate and provide a recommendation on these. And that's, you know, we have not had that before, so. And it's a, it's a great way to be able to proceed with one after the other, after the other, and feel good that they're sort of all being evaluated on the same, on the same plane, if you will, so.
Susan was a big part of it as well, don't, we don't want to forget that.
Thank you, Ernie.
So Bob, Ernie, and Susan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll type those up and I'll need all the signatures on them.
Yep, we have it right here. We'll take care of that. Public comment number one. Any public comment tonight? No? Committee liaison reports.
There was a meeting for the HTC and there were a couple of applications. We were, we were gonna work on revising their procedure, but we kind of ran out of time, so that's going to be tabled until July, just to make it more standard. But they did mail out, and if you live in the historic district, you would have received your letter. So we took the opportunity after the meeting to stuff envelopes with the letters that they did. And a local artist had, did some pencil drawings of some of the homes.
That was Sarah Oppenheimer.
Sarah Oppenheimer, and they were, they're fabulous and those are included in there. So everybody in the historic districts would have received their letter by now, but that's all I have.
Thank you.
Well, actually, I do have a thing, maybe, it was before, I was hoping Ernie would be here. So the HTC wanted clarification on the roof for the barn. And, because we were all under the impression it was going to be metal, but it's not going to be metal. It's going to be the same shingle as, similar shingle to what's on the L.
Similar, but not, not exact, but they will be, they will be asphalt shingles.
Right, okay. Because I think they, I think there were conversations at one point it was going to be a metal roof.
Well, there was discussion about that.
Right, and the HTC was still under that impression. So they'll be happy to hear that it's not a metal roof. Yeah.
I suspect they will be happy about that, yes.
Okay, fantastic, thank you.
Thank you. Glenn?
A couple of quick, well, hopefully, quick updates for you all. We received notice from Revision Energy that they have submitted the paperwork for the interconnection with Unitil. And they've done an initial, an initial design for the landfill. And the system will be 4.9 megawatts, which is very close to the five megawatts that they were hoping for. So they're limited by where they can put panels on the landfill because of slope and so forth, because it's going to be a ballasted system on the surface and they can only go up to a certain slope on that, so.
Project moving forward.
So the project is moving forward, that's the bottom line. And it'll, it'll get us in queue and they're, and they're working on it. So that's, that's progress. The other thing, oh, two other things. We received yet another review by the Department of Environmental Services on the RFP for the water treatment systems, for the PFAS remediation. We thought we were ready to go and DES had some additional comments on what Verdantis had put together for us. So it's now back in the hands of Verdantis to respond to the DES comments. We, that's it, we don't, we don't yet have an RFP to release. So that's the status of that. And one last thing, and this goes to my task, my project task for a volunteer memorial. We, Phil and Ernie and I happened to be overlooking at the project progress on the Grace Daly Barn and talked about the possibility of, and I need to know whether this board is okay with me sort of proceeding with this, so that's why I'm bringing it up. The green space beside this building, beside the parking lot, in front of the Grace Daly building, is where the Grace Daly House used to be. That's town property. It's about 66 feet wide and some number of feet long until you get to where the L is. It's an unused space at the moment. And my thought is, and I ran this by Phil and Ernie, and to think about you developing that as a landscaped garden area as, and a memorial at the same time, sort of like a little pocket park. Ernie Landry thought that it would be also a good place to integrate a project that he had been working on, and that is to provide some, some sort of a kiosk with information and wayfinding, things about Kingston and how you can find places in Kingston and so forth and so on. So it could be a multi-purpose type of a use spot. And since we already own the property, it's convenient. I've already reached out to the school superintendent, Mr. Ambrose, to see if there might be interest in possibly some students at the high school participating in this project as far as coming up with a design and helping us work on it. And he's, he's already identified some faculty advisor members for things like key club and so forth who could help us make that connection. So nothing is in motion at this point because I want to make sure that the board is, is okay with sort of moving forward with this kind of, just an idea on that parcel. Because if there were some thoughts about using that for something else, now would be the time to be talking about it before we get too much further on it. So it's just all ideas right now, but just wanted to make sure you were all aware of where I'm going with this.
I think it sounds pretty good, to be honest with you. I like the location and utilizing that space. I think that's a great idea. And it makes it more visible to visitors in town. I think all of that is good, so.
It got pretty positive reaction. In fact, Phil, I think, was one of the ones who initially suggested that we might look at that parcel. And Ernie was also very favorable of, and especially if we could work in his idea of a bit of a kiosk arrangement in there for information. And it could be sort of a welcome center, if you will, and a memorial to volunteers. Place to sit, place to enjoy the atmosphere of it. Could be a bunch of things.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Glenn?
Are you looking for, like, yes, use that space and go forth and design it or what?
Well, I, what I, what I was hoping, what I wanted to know is if anybody would say, well, no.
Oh, okay.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna...
You're not getting any no's.
We're gonna do something else there.
Yeah, we're not getting any, you're not getting any no's.
Okay, short of that, short of that, if, if, if the response is, yes, it sounds like an okay idea, you know, sort of carry on with that and, you know, bring us back some ideas and thoughts, then I will do that.
Okay, all right, good.
Thank you.
Yep, all right.
Okay.
I don't have anything.
Okay, you don't have anything? Peter, I do. The wage committee met last week in making more progress as we consolidate some of the issues here at the town hall. And one thing that came up is, as we look at the need for organizing, an org chart with more specifics, we wanted to, I want to have permission from the board to speak to Pedro about perhaps bringing the assessing clerk and land use administrator with dotted lines under his aegis in that building, the section of the town hall, so that he'd have the inspectors and the assessor, which would be Tori, because her duties interface with his, as does Robin, although she's fairly independent. But even if they had dotted lines that would report to him under that aegis, we want to explore that because as we're looking at other communities, that seems to be the general trend. So that we've already authorized them to have supervisory duties over the inspectors, it would make sense that he would be the link for those two within the town hall. You don't have to give me an answer now, I want, I want to talk... You don't have to give me an answer now, I want, I want to talk.
I thought that's how it works right now, I thought that's how we actually, I mean, there's kind of an unofficial dotted line there, because they do work together.
That's correct.
A dotted line doesn't mean supervisory authority, it means that they do take some direction because of the job that they do.
I, I would like to explore this more with Pedro and see what ideas that he may have and suggestions.
Right.
Nothing's cast in stone at this point, but it might make a more cohesive whole if we do that. I don't know, but just still exploratory stages, and I just want you to know what I, what direction I'd like to try for on behalf of the Wage Study Committee, okay? And I'll come back to you guys.
She works closely with him, she worked closely with him, but it's been set up that I'm her supervisor, because that's the way it was in the past with the administrative assistant and the formerly part-time assessing and permitting clerk.
Right.
So it's kind of developed into a larger job, so.
Her job.
She works assessing plus permitting.
Right, but dotted lines on an org chart generally indicate that it's not a supervisory role, but they do work because of similar tasks, so she might take direction.
Right, and she absolutely would, as far as the forms and everything else.
Right, 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 right.
But we're also looking ahead as to how that section might develop, and this would be the appropriate time to start conjoining that whole division. Again, nothing's concrete, I'll be back to you with.
So I, I think I need to understand from a wage study matrix, what does that have, how are those related? From a dotted line from building to assessing, how is that?
I don't know, I don't know, I don't have the answer, I won't know until we do more homework. I just wanted the authority from you guys to explore that direction, that's what I'm looking for.
I'm fine with the exploratory phase of that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I can't tell you exactly what it means, but all that assessing, permitting, still comes under one aegis, and that's where that is, and so how it works for us may have to change or not.
I, I, I think I'd see, I mean, just thinking about it, a real logical, strong connection between the building inspector, code enforcement officer, and the assessing person, perhaps less so for the land use person, but anyway.
But I'm not sure that the planning board chair and/or ZBA chair would be the appropriate department head for that, you know what I'm saying?
Right, because they're, that's a...
They're not department heads.
They're not department heads, right, that's a sticky one.
Right, so that one's odd.
Yep.
You do have, you do have a town planner who works very closely with the land use person, and there might be some integration there, but although that person is not a, an employee, that's a contract.
He's contracted services.
So it's different.
Well, I certainly don't, I certainly don't have any. Mike, how are you? Issue with the assessor, you know, being under that category.
Yeah, it makes sense.
The assessor is fine, the Robin, well, that part of it, I'm not so sure yet.
Yeah, and I, I'll want to talk with Robin as well, and get her feedback and input as well, so it's, just letting you guys know what's going on, so that we're, we're moving forward, and we're going to have an org chart for the town, we've wanted, we have, we have one, sort of, but this will be all included.
So I think that's why I'm confused, is, an org chart is separate from the wage study matrix.
I understand that, but we want to be able to visually see who, because everyone's duties is so mis, mixed, mixed.
Yep.
And we may have to unmix it, so that's why who reports to who is part of that process, that's all.
It could change, too, if we ever get a building clerk.
Well, of course, I mean, there's...
That would separate it a little bit more.
Well, if we get a town administrator at some point, it's going to change as well, so.
You might see it, I'll never live long enough to see it, but I doubt that, I bet.
Nor I.
Yeah, we're in the same boat on that one.
Ellie, before we get off the, the comment of permitting, just how the brain works, right?
Yep.
In liaison, when Phil's in the audience still. Phil, can I ask you a quick question on permitting? Driveway permitting, how does that work with you? I understand that you go out and do the inspections or whatever, but how does that whole process work if somebody comes and wants a permit for driveway?
So the way it has worked is, they go and pull a permit from Tori, they file it with her, she gets the money for it, and then it goes to our mailbox, and we do the inspection, or we do the, go out and look at it, approve it. Pedro and I have been looking at changing that for a couple of different reasons. One, there's no follow-up inspection in the process, so I go out, and if they follow it or don't, there's no...
Record.
Consequence, yeah. The other thing is, we've tried to, I've written it on most of the permits when they're paving, is to call me before they pave, so that we can at least look at the, the prepped ground, so it kind of heads off some of the issues, but, and then the other thing is establishing a bond for people who are doing paving work in town, because unfortunately, if we hit the pavers with a $400 fee for not pulling a permit, which is a lot of them, all they do is pass that on to the customer. So we're just hitting our residents with a $400 bill, so.
So you're suggesting that they be bonded as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Because there are the same people not pulling permits all the time. There are plenty of reputable pavers who do go and get the permits and do it properly, and then there are just the same ones that don't.
Okay.
So the process right now, I know, is that we take the fee and, you know, then we pass it on to you, and I think the thought process for all the permits is to not take the money, not issue anything at all until it goes to the inspectors, and the driveways would come to you, and then when you have approved it and told us what the fee is, then we would do that part of it, and hoping that that would prevent some of the people starting without, you know, thinking they're all set because they paid money, but there are always going to be those ones that just don't bother.
The ones who take the time to pull the permit in the first place and have the meeting and do that, there's no issues with them, it's the people who are trying to...
Well, and it's ultimately the property owner's responsibility to get that permit, unless the arrangement they have with the paver, the paver takes, you know, takes that responsibility and does it for them.
It's a miserable conversation to have weekend after week after week with people, because I'm the reason they're getting hit for $400, and, I, I mean, the pavers know that they're supposed to pull a permit, I can accept that the homeowners don't.
Well, I went through the repaving of my driveway last year, and of course, I'm on a state road, so I needed a state permit and town permit, and when I signed the contract with the paver, it was clearly agreed in, between myself and them, that I would be responsible for getting the permit, it was called out and therefore, but, but they, they knew, I mean, they were, they were good, they knew that a permit was required, actually, they told me, they said, "Now make sure you go to the state and the town," I said, "Yes, I know." Trust me, I know, but the paperwork put that responsibility on, to me, so.
So, to answer your question, Peter, there are changes that Pedro and I want to make, but until the software is put in place, it's kind of just changing it for however long we're doing it the current way, before we move to the digital.
Very, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? We might want to hold on, because we, okay. All right, item next is the contracts we want to sign, I believe they've, they've passed muster, am I correct in that?
As far as the architect goes, I, I had an email capturing all that, everything after I spoke with them, the only, the only one of the, the things that wasn't covered under his proposal was the geotechnical expert, and he said that's going to be at most $3,000, and we'll use town forces to do the digging to expose the hole, to bring them out. With regards to the shakes to shingles insulation estimate, I would hold off on that until we finalize what Unitil's portion of that is, so I just wanted to get that to the board so they had eyes on it, but until we get the breakdown of what we're actually paying, it's...
Okay, so we should sign the two SMP contracts to get that moving, and what about the, the tech thing for the C I, G I S services, is that under you?
No, that's cloud, that was the cloud permitting stuff.
The cloud one, okay.
Yes.
We're good to go, and the other two, and we'll hold off on the shakes to shingles one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Okay, and on the cloud contract, where are we with that?
The cloud permit is something you, yeah, you approved it last week.
And so we just signed, just assigned the contract, okay, yeah, that's in this stuff here. Okay, tax bill flyer we've already done, now we have some appointments, we have Outboard Association, the Kingston...
That's the fall regatta.
The fall regatta, yes. We have that to sign, assuming that's still a go. Yes, no? The regatta, we've been asked permission to use for the Outboard Association regatta to be held by the Kingston Children's Center in...
They've been doing that for years.
The South Shore.
That's the one that Graham said they have to do.
Right, is that under correspondence, or are we still under board business?
Well, no, she jumped ahead a little bit.
Yeah, so we still have stuff on board business.
Okay, the appointments.
And then, yeah, a couple things up there, and then all the correspondence.
All right, Conservation Commission alternate member, and that is Terry O'Brien, okay? And we are being given a set of policies for school, select board rules and procedures, first draft for our review, but no action tonight, we're going to take it home and read it and review it.
So I'm, I'm going to make a motion to approve the appointment of Terry O'Brien to alternate on the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, okay.
Terry, just so, just so you know, this gentleman is a neighbor just up the street from me on Exeter Road, heading toward Exeter, he's the one who built the greenhouse in the field there, he's, he's into farming and agriculture, and that's what he does.
Good, welcome aboard. Okay, the other item is, Susan's asking how we're going to handle the food for the volunteer picnic, volunteer and employee picnic, you keep saying volunteer, but it's...
It's both.
It's both.
Is it on a Saturday this year?
No, it's a Friday afternoon.
Twenty-second is a Saturday.
Did I put the wrong date on?
I want the twenty-first.
Probably.
It's a, it's a Friday.
It's a Friday.
Twenty-first.
So, yeah, I just wanted you to start thinking about it, because we don't have that many meetings between now and then, so.
Well, in the past...
What did they do last year?
Well, we did do it last year, we kind of forgot it.
Last year we skipped, and before that, we had a board member that handled a lot of that part of it.
So June 21st, right, so Friday.
So how has it been done in the past? Was it, like, we provided everything, somebody cooked, people just showed up?
Yeah, people, people showed up, and we, Rich Wilson was on the board, he did the cooking, basically, and got all the food, and employees and or volunteers brought desserts, those that wanted to, brought desserts. It was held at the fire station.
DPW.
DPW.
DPW, excuse me, that's correct.
So just because the personnel has changed, you know, someone's got to take that on.
I'll be in town, so I cook, but I won't be in town.
Okay, well.
I'm, I'm, I'm up in Berlin that day, I have to be up there for work, so I'm going to miss it, unfortunately.
Okay, I guess it's Chuck.
Oh, boy.
Oh, boy. No, that's fine, I'll...
Well, we don't necessarily have to cook, we could have it.
Well, no, we just have to figure out what...
We could also...
Recruit some other folks.
Yeah, we could, the department heads could, we could ask those, don't think we cook.
Yeah, no, I mean, if it's hot dogs and hamburgers and, you know, that kind of a thing.
Maybe Mr. Goddard would flip some burgers, and he's walking up, and he's walking up...
Mr. Goddard, aye.
That was your dad.
I will all warn you.
So I'm...
You cook, you have to be this long, eating myself, and then not kill myself again.
Got it.
Good job.
All right.
I mean, we could solicit the other department heads to see if they would do it.
All right, we have public comment number two, and no more public in sight.
No more public in sight.
All right, and then we go onto correspondence and applications, okay? So as I said, the first one was permission to use the, like, Greenwood Pond for the outboard motor activities.
Understood, and, and does it, does it need sign off from our department heads, like it?
And that they are, they have already done so.
And they have done it, okay.
They signed off, and there was a couple comments, which I will pass along.
I'm just going to shut down.
Okay. These are the restrictions that are listed on here, Susan. Number of participants, course markers shall be placed immediately before and removed immediately after event.
That's the plan that they put forward, and I, I think there was just some comments where they signed, where the department had signed, if they had any comments, such as, you know, parking.
The ambulance with two MTs is required, doesn't say anything about parking where they sign.
Okay, that's...
But the ambulance is required.
Okay, yep, and I will make sure they're there.
This is still on the regatta?
Yes, 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 I have a...
I think Graham said he's already spoken with them, so.
Okay.
Yeah, they were talking about it tonight, with parking with Joel and all that.
Yeah.
And having the ambulance there.
Right.
Well, if everything is in order on the application, then I'll make a motion to approve the annual fall boat regatta use of Town Beach at Greenwood Pond.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so it's approved. And the police chief noted to stay off the road, that was another key piece of that. The next item is, is facilities use from...
We're at the end.
Is that for the yoga?
Yoga, yeah.
For a one-hour yoga class offered every Monday night, weather permitting. I anticipate there will be a very small amount of people in the beginning, around five. We would like to grow the class to 15-ish people. I see this as a building year, and we will plan to continue this next summer as well. FYI, we offer yoga on the plains during Kingston days, which was well-received, we will also be offering this again for this year's celebration as well. We are fully insured through 4 insurance in Exeter. Now...
We had a big discussion at the end of last year, it was the same person.
Yes, we did, and you had attached the minutes.
The minutes are in there. Basically, the question is about the fee, whether you want a seasonal fee, if they're going to come, because right now, our fee schedule is so much per day, and it's only for one day.
Right.
And it's kind of a lot for something like this.
It is, and I, I think a seasonal fee is definitely acceptable. They, they, I mean, that's such a small group of people, it's, there's, you know, there's, there's no need for police detail or anything, it's just people, you know...
What night was it on?
Monday nights.
Monday nights.
And I think, you know, the, the plains are so big, I don't, do they indicate, are they going to use by the gazebo?
I don't know if that got a...
Because no one ever uses that part, there's...
That's the thing I'd be concerned about, if we commit to somebody that's late, is going to do it, like, say, every Monday night, would that interfere with somebody else's function? I just, I would just be curious.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm, I'm trying to think, so most, most of, like, the Little League practices and all that are, like, in the main field, and Smitty's Wrestling Barn, those kids run, but I can't, I don't know what time, and I, I never pay attention to the day, but they do, like, a mass of kids are running the thing, so I think that's the only thing we'd have to kind of figure out, or these people practicing yoga would get trampled by a bunch of teenagers. Well, because they're doing it at dusk, though, too, so I don't know what the timing, right? We'd have to figure that out.
They have this between 6:00 and 7:00 PM is the time they have listed.
Okay.
Every Monday, June, July, and August, with September pending.
I have no problem with the seasonal thing, I would just like to have something, maybe we could pick out a certain location where we know they're going to be, because there are other things happening on the plane.
Yep.
It's almost like, all right, I'm going to reserve the plains every Monday night for the rest of the season.
Right, right, right.
I think we should, they should have an area.
They should know where.
Yeah, just so we know where they are, whether it's over the corner by Rick's, under the trees, whatever, somewhere.
Exactly, because Smitty's, they use, they run past, like, just the first part, past the gazebo, and then they run back, so that would be the only thing that would concern me, that there would be some, somebody would get hurt.
So they should be down closer to the state park, because when they used to do the jousting on the plains, that's where they were, by the, the road that cuts across by the Kingston house.
Yep, yep.
On that section there.
Yeah, so I, that, that would be, right, the only thing.
That would be, that would be the ideal spot, because...
Specify where, yeah.
Near the state park, that section.
And I'm going to put on here, near the state park. Okay, if you can convey that, Susan.
Yep.
And then it would just come down to the, the fee?
Yep.
Whatever is.
Stacy. Well, it isn't yet, but.
I just want to clarify that the week of the Summer Fest, the Kingston Fire Summer Fest, they will start to be setting up during that week, so they may not be able to have yoga on that Monday night, depending on where they're having it and where, when we have, like, the tents coming in and the carnival coming in and.
We're designated a section down by the state park, across from the Kingston House.
Okay, where the parking is.
Yes.
Okay, we should be fine, I just wanted to.
I can worry her about that, though.
Yeah, because we will have people coming in to set up.
Skip that. Skip that Monday.
Yep. And I'm going to put down here also, and cross from Kingston 1686 House. Yes, you wouldn't know that.
It's on the.
Is it in Salem or something?
No. I can't remember, I don't, I'm not looking at the form right now, but it says on there.
I'm looking for it, I'm looking for it, hold on a second. They were out of Salem, if it's the same group, they came to us before.
Yeah.
And it does not, it does not say the name of the group on this.
It's typed in, it's hard to see, but it's on there.
So, this is not, this is not a Kingston, this is, this is not a Kingston?
No, Iron Cactus, it is.
Yeah, so, okay, they're Kingston.
A different group.
Yeah, there's two different that have come.
The other one was.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Well, we've got to figure the fee.
We, we need to discuss the fee.
All summer, I'd say a hundred dollars.
So, what, just for kicks, what, what was the per-use fee, the per-day fee?
Fifty.
It was fifty.
But that was, we got to go to Salem.
Right.
I think fifty's the lowest, isn't it? I don't have that. So, the last minute say was fifty, when we talked about it last year, was decided to assess a one-time $50 fee.
But this is three months, and she wants to grow from five to 15, I, I don't know. Phil's concerns obviously was utilization of the planes, I don't think this should be, I, I wouldn't mind trying it this, you'll see how it works. If there is damage and overuse, then we're going to say no another time. I mean, we don't know, just saying, you could have 100 people show up.
You, you could, but I would argue that there are Little League teams and flag football teams that use the planes every week for practice, and I don't think we're charging them, so we just need to be careful on how we're managing that, and. I think the point Phil has made before is if they, if they're a for-profit, if she's making money from these lessons, then that changes it from. But it's also a use thing. Right. So, there, there's no, have they gone through anybody to say that they're using the plane? So, it's a use thing, because they're going to run into the Summer Fest and all of these other things, too, so it's, it's a use thing, not just a money thing. Right, the reason for the request is to, so we know it's happening. So, we manage who's using the plane, so there's a lot of people who use the planes, and that's what they're there for, but we're not managing it because they're just using it, which they should, so, like, where.
So, where are you going with this?
Who do you, who do you charge money and who don't you, or who has to apply? Who has to apply? Who are we charging money to? You know, there, there's a lot of questions for that. We always used to expect the cross-country teams to put in a facilities use. They do, I think they do. And I don't know that they have done in the last. They did last year, it was, they put it in after the fact? Yeah, it was kind of casual.
I think, I think it's a great idea that we should have a request for use, we can make the determination whether you're going to charge or not, like the Little League, no, the track, no. Somebody's making money on the planes, yes.
Yeah.
But we, I think it's, I, I do think it's important, if you have another entity that wants to rent the planes or have an event there, there's going to be some type of a schedule.
Yep.
So, we kind of know what's going on.
Right, yeah.
And I, I, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, so we can, so we can manage it, right?
Exactly.
So that two people, like, we always use it here, now there's two flag football teams playing tackle, because they're pros. Right, just not to charge money all the time, but just to manage it. So, should we be contacting the schools and the other places? I have no idea who that little flag football team is from, I have no idea. Couldn't tell you. But anyway, so for this, I don't know, for that a hundred dollars for the year, I have no idea, like, what do we do for this, for this yoga thing for the whole year?
I don't think a hundred dollars is out of.
Oh, god, no, that's not at all.
I think it's right.
Yeah.
I think that's fairly reasonable.
I think so, it goes.
Agreed.
And see how it goes.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, do we have a motion?
Well, okay. Well, no, I'm not making the motion, because, because I think, I think, I think that fee is way, way too low for, for, for a private money-making entity using our public facilities, I'm sorry. But.
Okay.
Someone, someone can go ahead and make the motion. I guess, I guess, I guess I'm looking at, when you say using a public facility, we're not supplying bathrooms, electricity, nothing, it's the grass. Yeah. So, they're coming onto the planes, they're, they're holding an event, you know, it's, I think it's, I think it's a, a community-building event, even though she's making 15, 20 bucks a person, whatever she's going to charge to go up there and do yoga for an hour and a half, but I, I personally, I mean, it's $50 a time, and they go there four times, you know, $200 versus a season, because all of a sudden, one night they might have rain, and they're not going to go up there and do it in the rain.
Yeah.
So, now are we supposed to reimburse them because they're not doing it?
I don't think.
I, I just think it's just to see how it goes, I think, you know, that, they're not using really any of our facilities, they're just out on the grass, I think it's, I think for a yoga, I think a one-time fee of the hundred dollars is applicable.
For the summer season.
I make a motion, a hundred dollars for a, a fee for the yoga. The Iron Cactus, they have, and, and we'll talk to them as far as the location, it's going to be out of the way, maybe down in front of the 1686 house by the state park.
Yep.
And, did they, for this season.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
I'm opposed, not for the use, but for the fees.
Okay, so it's for one.
And I do think we have to revisit that fee schedule, just so this isn't a discussion about everything that comes up.
Correct.
It makes it difficult.
Oh, and can I?
Writing that down as a to-do for me, to look at that whole policy and revise it, and then we'll make suggestions and just kind of go from there.
Can I ask a question? Peter, when you made the motion, the application is for June, July, August, and possibly September, so are you? The season.
Summer season.
Summer season. Including September? Yep. If they, if they do September?
Yeah.
And I do, and I do, and I do, this is not part of the motion, but I do request you look into this, because, you know, if all of a sudden somebody wants to have a food festival truck event for three weekends in a row, whatever, it's not going to be the same thing.
That will be a hundred dollars.
It's, it's by case, it's by case that we make that decision.
And it's also by, like, impact.
Correct.
To the, to the planes and.
Correct.
How much services they require, yeah, there's a lot of factors.
Yeah, so I think it's by case.
Yep.
Presented to the board.
Yep, agreed. Which is already built into that fee schedule, that you have some discretion, but if you can have a lot of things per season, I think you need to delineate it a little bit.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, we have another application for special events license for farm tour at Baky Farm for about 10 to 15 participants from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, and it's N O F A New Hampshire Wild Fern Farm on Powell River Road in Kingston, and the date is July 17th.
There are two dates, by the way, it's two different things.
One, June 7th.
And the other, June 2nd.
Right.
June 2nd, that's right.
June 2nd.
And neither of them was anything that any of the department heads had any problem with, or provide, required any services for, because it's so small and it's on private property, but they did, do have to ask in case there's parking issues or.
It's private, private property.
Yeah. If it gets big enough, then we require.
I'd almost recommend, on their, on what she has mentioned, I'd almost recommend, I've been to these before, and they're actually a great fun time.
Yep.
And they're going to have that one the 2nd, I think we should sign the one the 2nd, see how it goes, and then revisit the one the 27th of July.
How can you say something on private property?
Because it's, it's a money-making event.
But it's on private property.
Public property.
No.
Yes, it is. No, 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 I'm sorry, it's open to the public.
Yes.
And they're charging a fee for a dinner, and they're serving food.
I don't know, is that what?
Yeah, so you read it, that's exactly what it says, but I've been to them before, and they usually have more than, more than 15 people that show up.
Let me read this, too. We are hosting a farm tour in conjunction with Seacoast Eat Local on June 2nd. The event is open to the public, and Seacoast Eat Local is charging for the event to cover their costs for organizing the event and for their nonprofit. I do not think we will get more than 20 to 30 participants. We have plenty of parking on the lawn in the barnyard at the farm. We will be walking around the barn, around the farm and having a discussion.
So, maybe we could sign both of them and just kind of see how the 2nd goes, just in case, I mean, I, it might draw quite a bit of people, those are, those are usually pretty nice events.
I mean, my only issue would be to check with Joel to see if he's going to need a car.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Again, I, I hope for free trade, and we do an awful lot of.
Yep.
Telling people they can't do things.
Oh, no, I didn't say he couldn't do it.
Yeah, Joel just said he doesn't require a detail, but if they request one, he will provide it, that's what he said.
There you go.
So, did we approve it? I mean, I'm.
Approve, approve. I'll make a motion to approve the June 2nd, and do we, do we want to do both and see how the first one goes, and, all right, so we'll do, approve the June 2nd and the July 17 special event license application for the farm tours at Baky Farm.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? You're opposed?
Opposed on the fact that I don't think that we should be signing off on somebody having a private party, so that's just my, my take on it, anybody, it's like having a guitar player at the restaurant, you tell them they can't do that because they're in a problem with the planning board, and again.
Then you're sure we're going to sign it.
Anyway.
Okay.
I'll draw up a permit thing to send to them, that's what.
And we have a letter. Okay, the G I S services we're going to hold off, is that correct? No, that was a contract we were going to sign. The cloud.
The shingles one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we have one from Muriel Ingles in the Kingston Lake Association, they received, please find a check, the invoice of Kingston, New Hampshire Lakes Association for $2,500. This money is in the Kingston Conservation Commission's budget, the amount is part of a magic grant with the New Hampshire Lakes Association for the Lake Host Program. K L A will be awarded $32.30 from the New Hampshire Lakes, this award is based on the number of inspections at the two ramps in the town's match of $2,500. So, they're asking us for the $2,500, there's an invoice for the $2,500 here. Do we have a motion to pay that?
So moved.
And a second discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. It's G I S, and this one here? Is this, oh, this is one you, okay. Approval of minutes from May 13th. Public and non-public?
So moved.
In a second? Okay, and was there any corrections or anything? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion approved. And so now we'll go into non-public to talk about.
Make a motion going on public.
Oh, sure.
Sorry, I was with the supervisors, there's a checklist downstairs, so, I wanted to just speak about something that the Wage Matrix is working on. We would like for the Select Board to sign off on job descriptions as part of what we're putting together. We have, like, the department heads or anyone who reports directly to the Select Board to send the most current, to the liaisons, to send the department heads job descriptions so that you can review it, because what we're finding out, as we're going through some of these job descriptions, that people have additional roles and responsibilities that aren't in their title, but that are in their job descriptions, that may be for multiple